Alrighty, I'll call a meeting to order. Good evening, welcome to the regular city council meeting of the city of Bella Vista from Monday, the 27th of February. We'll start with an invocation, pledge of allegiance, and then move to the roll call. So if you'd join me, please. Pass your roll.
Let us pray. Lord God, I begin by giving you thanks for this day. For your greatness, for your grace, for your abundant mercy, for your provision, power, protection evident in so many ways in our lives and in this community we love. I want to thank you this evening, Lord, for those men and women who have been given a heart to serve and whose desire is not for personal gain but for the betterment of this community. I pray that you would bless their hearts, bless their minds, bless their deliberations this evening, their decision-making, that it all might not only benefit the people of this community, but that it might also give uttering glory to you. We also ask a special blessing on those who serve, that they might be safe in their service. I thank the men and women of our police department and those who serve in a variety of ways, the citizens of this community. Guard and protect them and help us to be a people appreciative of these blessings that we know ultimately come from you. And we pray in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you. I'd like to leave this.
... to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, sir. Alderman Barr?
Right.
Alderman Lloyd?
Here.
Alderman Flynn?
Here.
Alderman Anderson?
Here.
Alderman Wozniak?
Here.
Alderman Fowler?
Here.
All present. One of the pleasures of being mayor is to be able to give the oath of office to new officers. And we have two that are joining our organization here with us this evening and their families. And so I'm going to ask Cole Byers to come up first, please, and we'll swear you in, sir.
Welcome. Thank you, sir.
I, Cole Byers.
I, Cole Byers.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Arkansas?
The Constitution of the State of Arkansas.
And the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bella Vista?
And the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bella Vista.
That I will faithfully and impartially?
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of police officer?
Perform the duties of police officer.
For the City of Bella Vista Police Department?
For the City of Bella Vista Police Department.
In Benton County, Arkansas?
In Benton County, Arkansas.
Upon which I am now about to enter?
Upon which I am now about to enter.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Welcome. It's great to have you.
Thank you.
She wants a picture.
Ah. I think there's a picture.
Thank you, sir.
I, Chase Henry.
I, Chase Henry.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Arkansas?
The Constitution of the State of Arkansas.
And the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bella Vista?
And the Code of Ordinances and the City of Bella Vista.
That I will faithfully and impartially?
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of police officer?
Perform the duties of police officer.
For the City of Bella Vista Police Department?
For the City of Bella Vista Police Department.
In Benton County?
In Benton County.
Arkansas?
Arkansas.
Upon which I am now about to enter?
Upon which I am now about to enter.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
We'll move into the citizen input and public appearance, and we only have one this evening. Colonel Parsons, you're on.
I am Jim Parsons, and I'm the chairman of the Belvist Patriots. Live on Lake Avalon, and I hope that my being here tonight, that you're not thinking, oops, here are the patriots, obstructionists, and that is absolutely not true. Perhaps the patriots are the best friends the city has. In fact, it was the patriots that rented a bus and went to the legislature in 2005 and made it possible for us to become a city in 2006. And we're very much in your support, and we're very much your friends. Deciding maybe on some judgments you have tonight, we may wind up being your only friend. I don't know. Anyway, I have two questions that I want to ask, and the first one is, do you plan tonight to talk at all about the hiring of this consulting firm out of Kansas City? Are you planning on talking about that tonight at all?
No, that'll be in March.
In March? That's good, because I thought that was not on the website, and it's not on the agenda, and I thought that would be a breach. The other question that I have is, is it with as little money as we have to hire a consulting firm over $100,000? Don't we have enough brains within our city with our planning committee and with the mayor and all of you on the city council to decide our destiny and our future? Do we really need to hire a consultant? Is that wise, and is that money well spent? They're in Kansas City. What do they know that we don't know? And also, they'd be hard to get a hold of, be hard to work with. They'll probably still be in power and running things around here even after all of us are gone. Do we really want to enter into a contract like that and subject ourselves to that kind of long-term commitment? Don't we want to be in charge of our own destiny? And wasn't a patriot plan a perfect plan?
Patriot plan?
No. Okay. Well, listen, think about it, and I know we're concerned about it, and we'll be following this closely, but thank you.
You're welcome. We have, excuse me, two sets of minutes to approve this evening. The first is the regular meeting of January 23rd, 2017. Are there any errors or omissions? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second.
And it's you, sir. Okay, roll call. Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Lloyd?
Yes.
Alderman Fowler?
Yes.
Alderman Barr?
Same.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Carrie. The second set of minutes was a special meeting that we had on February 21st to talk about the vending fees for the farmers' markets. Are there any errors or omissions?
Recommend approval as presented.
All right. Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Barr?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Lloyd?
Yes.
Alderman Fowler?
Yes.
Carrie. Thank you. The monthly financial report for January will be delayed until next month. As you know, we're integrating a new payroll system called Paychecks. Excuse me, and part of that integration means that some of the changes have to be made to our financial reporting. I beg your indulgence, and we'll move on. I'd entertain a motion to suspend the rules and read all proposed ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only.
So moved. Second.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Fowler?
Yes.
Alderman Lloyd?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Carrie. The first order of business is an ordinance amending sections 18-20A of the municipal code regulating mucences and for other purposes. This is the second reading. Is there any discussion? Sir?
I'd like to introduce an amendment to it, but before I do that, I wanted to review a little bit of history. On December 26th, a citizen named Larry Schluter sent an email letter to everybody who was on the council at that time. And the thrust of it was that it says you've got to put your garbage container away within 12 hours after the garbage is picked up, but it doesn't say what away is. So he called City Hall and asked them where he was supposed to put it, and they referred him to Chris Sinison's department. And City Hall couldn't answer the question, and Chris's department couldn't answer the question. So I responded to his letter. I don't know if other councilmen did or not. Communicated with him back and forth a little bit, and I talked to Chris Sinison. And I guess the upshot of it, my view and his view, is that we had an ordinance in place that was ambiguous, and so it needed to be corrected. So that's the reason I'm offering this amendment having to do with the placement of garbage cans. And the change would be to subsection 8, and it would read as follows. And this is a laundry list of different things that you're supposed to do. In the R1 zone, place garbage containers behind the front plane of the house or in a garage or in a carport. I just talked about the front plane of the house at our work session, and I know some people had some concerns. So I'm offering that worded this way as a proposed amendment.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, that's a motion.
And that's which is going to replace what? Section 18-20A?
Eight? Yeah. That's a motion to change subsection 18-20A8 of section 1 of the proposed ordinance that you have in your materials.
I would second that motion.
May I?
Yes. Okay, we have a second here? Yes. Okay. Yes, sir.
No, I would just like to say, again, you know, just driving around Bella Vista, for a lot of people behind the front plane of the house, it's really not possible. I think contiguous to the house, which could mean actually somewhere in front of the house, in front of the garage, or whatever. And I don't know the gentleman's regular intent. I know, and I know maybe I shouldn't use like a personal example, but whenever I received my garbage can, my container, I was able to put my garbage, like I was able to store it in my garage before, but when I got the garbage container, I was no longer able to do that. And I remember when it was delivered, I was like, well, gosh, I wonder what am I going to do with this thing? I wonder if it's okay to put it beside my house, which I can. I can put it behind the front plane, but it's still visible. And I was asking myself, I said, I wonder if I might get a letter from the city telling me that, you know, my garbage container is visible from the street, and I need to do something else with it. So I just wondered if this is kind of what the gentleman was thinking himself, because he was able to put it in the garage, and now he can't any longer. And being the case that a lot of the houses, it's just really not possible to put a garbage container behind the front plane of the house just because of the train in Bella Vista. If it would be possible toward as such, where we could do contiguous, which would mean in front of the house, just, all we're asking is, the city would be remove it from the street and put it somewhere in the proximity of the house, away from the street.
Okay. Sir?
The amendment takes care of those in the R1 district, but still leaves about 15% of the, at least 15% of the houses. I guess they can leave their trash can out at the street. No.
We have a separate ordinance in place by the time. So it dictates when, as soon as you, when you have to take the can off the street. That's already in place. That's not impacted by that.
And put it where?
Well, it doesn't say where to put it. It says take it, take it off the street.
They can leave it on the street. They can move it a foot.
No, they cannot leave it on the street. They have to take it off the street.
Well, that was the question, and that's why John got into this, because there is nothing that says how far you have to put it or where you have to put it. So that's why John's making the recommendation, if I understood his initial concept. There is no place, it says, and we can't give them an answer when they call us. Where do I have to put this trash can? So for 15% of the people, we didn't fix whatever the guy was calling about. And I guess I agree with Alderman Fowler. I don't think that the front plane of the house in most instances is really going to make any difference. It's not going to be invisible for sure, and he's right. There's a lot of people that can't get it there.
Well, I'd like to say too, since there's a large percentage, I don't know what the percentage is that can't put it behind the front plane, but now we have an ordinance in place that says that's where it needs to be. To me, it almost becomes unenforceable. Or Chris's department, you know, he has his co-enforcement officers, and they're out there and they're driving around, could cause a lot of letters that are really unnecessary or may even have to turn, you know, a blind eye to it, because again, I don't know how enforceable it really is. But just moving it to the house and just saying, hey, it's okay, just, we actually take it from the street. If you move it around the house someplace, that's okay.
Okay.
No, they cannot amend the amendment.
Okay. Any further discussion? Sir?
Well, another, one of the things I was concerned about, I get that it could be a challenge for some people and perhaps not even doable, but I guess I never perceived Chris Sinison's department as, I can never remember the new name of your department, Community Development, something cheerful sounding, isn't it? Anyway, I never viewed them as particularly draconian in the way they act. What I was concerned about, and I get complaints from people like this a lot, not in regard to garbage, but in regard to everything. You have a person who's neat and tidy and takes a lot of pride in the community in his own home, and then he has a neighbor who's just the opposite. So I'm concerned the way it is now, you could take your garbage can off the curb and leave it in the middle of your front yard, or throw it down sideways in the middle of your front yard, and that would be okay. So, you know, I get concerned that we see the odd terrain and worry about the few people who are some kind of odd exception, and then, you know, there's something like 13,000 houses in Bella Vista, and we get so caught up in the four or five odd situations, and then we leave the 12,900 to their own devices. I could see somebody calling the city and complaining, and then Sinison's department saying, well, I can't do anything about it, because the middle of the front yard's just fine according to the ordinance.
Okay. Mayor, can I? I can. Sure. I want to clarify for everyone, to make sure everyone understands what the current ordinance says. Current ordinance 18-20 is the ordinance that reference is regarding the 12-hour pickup. Owners or occupants of real property within the corporate limits of the city are hereby required to, and it goes through a list, then we get to, required to refrain from placing garbage containers out for garbage pickup more than 12 hours before pickup or longer than 12 hours after pickup. That's what it says.
Okay. Thank you. Further discussion?
But we apparently still believe, or at least some of us believe, we need to fix that, that that's not good enough. And what I'm saying is that for 15% of the people at least, and that's more than the four or five that John's referring to, we didn't fix it. They're going to be able to leave theirs out in the middle of the front yard or in the middle of their front porch or wherever else they want to leave it, because we limited it to R1. And all I'm saying is, you know, is 85% okay? Is that what we really want to do?
The amendment is on 8, which is not referencing the law. The debate needs to be limited to the amendment at this point.
But it is an R1. That's his plan, the carport and the garage.
Yes, sir.
And so the way the amendment is written is R1, so if we look at R2, what percentage of R2 is actually being served by a dumpster versus by individual?
I cannot speak to the number of housing units that are served by dumpsters necessarily. I can tell you that R2 and R3 properties comprise approximately 15% of our housing stock, as Alderman Anderson indicates.
And I believe that the new trash system with the trash cans, they gave up the corrals, and I believe they gave up most of the dumpsters in the townhouse areas. Those were not the neatest-looking places and the places they wanted to keep anyway. So with the new trash can system and the fact they will pick up in houses, I don't believe there's too many of those folks that are now covered by what used to be called corrals and the dumpster system, which was really not too extensive ever. I mean, there were three or four dumpsters in the townhouse association areas is about all they ever had as far as true dumpsters go.
Further discussion? Sir?
No.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion on the table. Okay, this is to vote on the amendment as proposed by Alderman Flynn.
Can you repeat the amendment?
Subsection 18, that subsection 18-20, paragraph A, paragraph 8 of section 1 of the proposed ordinance be amended to read as follows. In the R1 zone, place garbage containers behind the front plane of the house or in a garage or in a carport. Period. Okay. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Alderman Lloyd?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
No.
Alderman Fowler?
No.
Alderman Barr?
Yes.
Carrie. Or two. So next month will be the third reading?
No. Now you have the ordinance amended on second reading, and someone else won't seek recognition, I believe.
Yes, sir.
I would like to make an amendment to subsection 18-20A1 of section 1 of the proposed ordinance that be amended from the 10 inches that's in there now to 12 inches, which is the height of the weeds that we're talking about. My primary reason for doing that is, is I think the more, the less or lower number we have, the more money the city will spend in policing and mowing. And I'm not sure what we spent last year in mowing, but I know we spent a few thousand dollars. I don't think that 12 inches is super excessive.
Okay.
Second, need to ask for a second.
Seconder?
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
I believe it's written down. I believe, Alderman, you have that amendment written down.
Further discussion before the vote on the amendment? Sir?
Well, just to clarify, so it did say 10 inches, and the amendment is to change it to 12 inches?
Right.
Yes.
Any other questions or discussion?
Nah, you could leave it at 10, don't enforce it till 12, because when you get to 12, you're not going to enforce it till 14 anyhow.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right.
This is on the amendment.
So vote on the amendment. On this amendment. Alderman Barr?
No.
Alderman Fowler?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
No.
Alderman Lloyd?
No.
Mayor, the vote is split three to three. You may choose to vote in favor if you choose.
I choose not to vote.
Okay. Amendment fails.
Okay.
Any further debate on the proposed ordinance?
Any further debate on the proposed ordinance? All right. We'll move on to the next. This is an ordinance levying a tax in the amount of 2% upon the gross receipts or gross proceeds from renting, leasing, or otherwise furnishing hotel, motel, house, cabin, bed, and breakfast, campground, condominium, or other similar rental accommodations for sleeping, meeting, or party room facilities for profit in the city of Bella Vista for periods of less than 30 days, levying a tax in the amount of 1% upon the portion of the gross receipts or gross proceeds received by restaurants, cafes, cafeterias, delicatessens, drive-in restaurants, carry-out restaurants, concession stands, convenience stores, grocery store restaurants, or similar businesses defined herein from the sale of prepared food and beverages for on-premises or off-premises. And creating a Bella Vista advertising and promotion committee, excuse me, commission, and creating an advertising and promotion fund, and providing for collection and enforcement of the taxes, providing penalties for non-payment of the taxes and for other purposes. This is the first reading. Discussion? Sir?
I recall at the work session, there was some conversation about what the effective date should be for this to start, and I wasn't sure how that ended up.
Travis, you and I had talked about running things in parallel. Did you get an opportunity to speak with Mr. Kelly?
I haven't.
Okay.
The ordinance itself would take effect 60 days after final passage, assuming there was any petition filed or anything. But what we would, what the blanks are that will need to be amended and filled in at some point will be the date in which the tax takes effect. And so the reason those two things may not match is that you're going to need to get your AMP commission created, constituted, and they're going to be working on collecting this tax, and they'll need to do some work, or their people will need to do some work to get that done. And so that probably would not be able to be done within 60 days, but you're putting a legal requirement that they start collecting it within 60 days of its adoption. So my recommendation would be, though it's not required, my recommendation would be that you set this off to give enough cushion for, once you get your commission in place, because they can't act until 60 days after this is passed, you can't even start appointing, you can't get anybody on the commission yet. You could have people ready to go, but they could not meet until at least 60 days after the ordinance took effect, and then they'll need to plan out how they want to conduct business, because remember, this is independent, and they're going to have a say in how they want to do this. So you may want to set this collection date off to some date in the future.
What Travis and I had talked about was actually getting all the, all the various steps in place that have to be ready to go, and then once we had gone past the 60 days after the third and final reading, then we could perhaps move faster than we had if we just waited till that point and then moved on.
But let me remind you, this is the AMP commission's tax and their money and their say-so over what happens.
Exactly.
And so it's not us to decide what we're going to do for them. It's theirs to decide how they want to do it.
Okay. All right.
I would just propose that once the tax is implemented, possibly by September 1st, if that's not too aggressive, that we'll start accumulating some funds in the next season or next year, 2017, but also have at least three or four months to plan a budget for 2017 and see what the numbers are going to look like.
Okay. All right. So we'll have to, John?
Well, I wondered if the city had any thought about accelerating this as far as going to third reading, or do you want to walk it through at the regular rate?
No, I would prefer to let it go its normal way. This is a tax, and I believe that we need to all feel very comfortable and understand what it's going to do. I think the citizens have to feel very comfortable as well and have an opportunity to address council if need be in the coming months. So it would be my proposal, we just let it go its normal course.
I have a question. How would we attempt to collect from people like Airbnb renters?
They're going to get the same letter as everybody else, and then by law, they're going to have to comply.
How would we know about them?
We can go onto the Airbnb website and all of them.
Further discussion?
Probably also get a notice from the state if the state's going to do the collecting.
I'm sorry?
No. They don't get a notice from the state?
The state does not collect AMP tax. The AMP commission must collect this tax. It's not collected with general sales tax.
Okay. Correct. Any other questions or observations?
No, I just like to say I'm No, I just like to say I'm pleased that we're going to go the full three readings on this, because, you know, we've talked about ways that the money could be spent in order to promote Bella Vista. We've talked about the commission and possibilities of, you know, who may be on that, but we haven't talked about really the administration of the monies and how that would be handled once, handled once the commission is set. And depending on how that's approached, you know, it could be, you know, significant or less so as far as maybe hiring of employees by the commission to do that. So, rather than pass something now and then find out what's in it later is certainly not an approach that I would like to take. I would like to definitely be able to research this thoroughly before we move forward.
I would point out to council that Travis did send out an email today outlining how other cities are doing it. If you haven't had the opportunity to take a peek at it, I would encourage you to do so. If there's nothing else, we'll move on. Next is an ordinance amending section twenty-four dash one, Street and Right-of-Way Excavation Permit Manual of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bella Vista to adopt a revised and updated manual declaring an emergency and for other purposes. You may remember at the work session Superintendent Button talked to us about this. He did provide a memorandum, which is in your packet. The street department has seen an increase in the number of street cut permits over the year. Now, we are recommending a number of changes to the manual. These changes will aid us in enforcing moving forward. In addition, these changes will create a fluent system and help reduce the number of backlog permits, and the biggest change is to assist in these proposed revisions is a requirement of having permanent street cut repairs completed within six months of the permit issued date. And Mike's not here tonight, but I'm assuming everybody can remember that conversation. Is there any discussion at all? Not hearing any, then I would entertain a movement to suspend the rules and move to third and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Alderman Lloyd?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Fowler?
Yes.
Alderman Barr?
Yes.
Carried, six zero.
Thank you. I'll go to third and final reading, amending section twenty-four dash one, Street and Right-of-Way Excavation Permit Manual of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bella Vista to adopt a revised and updated manual declaring an emergency and for other purposes. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Alderman Barr?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Fowler?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Lloyd?
Yes.
Carried, six zero.
Jim?
Need to have a motion to approve the emergency clause.
All right. And if you'll note, it does say declaring an emergency, so I would appreciate a motion to declare the emergency, please.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All right, sorry.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Barr?
Yes.
Alderman Fowler?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Lloyd?
Yes.
Carried, six zero.
Okay, the next is an ordinance amending section two dash two-two-six of Division Four, City Treasurer of Article Three Officers and Employees of Chapter Two Administration of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bella Vista to bring this section into clear conformance with state law, declaring an emergency, and for other purposes. You may remember at the work session, Mr. Kelly took us through this one and the one that we will have next. Are there any questions or discussions at all? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? It's yours.
All righty. Okay. Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Fowler?
Yes.
Alderman Lloyd?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Barr?
Yes.
Carried, six zero.
Thank you, and finally, a motion to declare an emergency.
No.
No, I'm sorry, I have to read it a third time. Amending section two dash two-two-six of Division Four, City Treasurer of Article Three Officers and Employees of Chapter Two Administration of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bella Vista to bring the section into clear conformance with state law, declaring an emergency, and for other purposes. Any discussion? Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Alderman Lloyd?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Fowler?
Yes.
Alderman Barr?
Yes.
Carried, six zero.
Thank you. Now, I'd entertain a motion for the emergency clause.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Back to you, sir.
All righty. Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Fowler?
Yes.
Alderman Barr?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Lloyd?
Yes.
Carried, six zero.
The next ordinance is amending the Bella Vista Code of Ordinances to add a section two dash two-eight-five of Article Four Departments of Chapter Two Administration to create a city finance department headed by a finance director prescribing the duties of the finance director, declaring an emergency, and for other purposes. This is the other part of that same motion that we just moved on, and hopefully you can remember Mr. Kelly's advice and counsel. He is here if you have any further questions. Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Alderman Lloyd?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Barr?
Yes.
Alderman Fowler?
Yes.
Carried, six zero.
Thank you. Third and final reading, amending the Bella Vista Code of Ordinances to add a section two dash two-eight-five of Article Four Departments of Chapter Two Administration to create a city finance department headed by a finance director prescribing the duties of the finance director, declaring an emergency, and for other purposes. Any discussion? Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Alderman Barr?
Yes.
Alderman Fowler?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Lloyd?
Yes.
Carried, six zero.
Thank you, and finally, a motion to declare an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? It's yours, sir.
All righty. Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Barr?
Yes.
Alderman Fowler?
Yes.
Alderman Lloyd?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Carried, six zero.
Thank you. The next is an ordinance adding, amending, or replacing certain portions of the municipal code, chapter one oh nine, and for other purposes. This is the first reading. This is the forty-eight page missile that's in your document, that's come out of Chris's department, and I think Jennifer was the author, and Jennifer is here to answer any questions. Is there any discussion at all this evening? Okay, seeing none, I'll turn the page and move to the next. Now, moving into the world of resolutions. Authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Henard Utility Products, Inc., pursuant to an NJPA co-op purchasing agreement for the purchase of one U-model brush chipper in the amount of forty-four thousand six hundred and eighty-nine dollars for usage by the street department. You may remember, last month, we passed the passage of a truck. This is now the chipper that will attach to that truck. It is a fifteen-inch chipper, and the main reason for getting it, of course, is that the east side stump dump is being closed by the POA, and as far as we know, it is not being replaced. It'll also give us an opportunity to store the chips up at the street department for use by the community if people want to come and get it as mulch. Any discussion at all? I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Alderman Barr?
Yes.
Alderman Fowler?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Lloyd?
Yes.
Carried, six zero.
Thank you. The next resolution, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with first employment staffing in amount not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars to provide personnel for seasonal right-of-way mowing. Again, if you remember at the work session, Mike told us that this is for two people, not four, as we have had in the past. He did get approval with the twenty-seventeen budget to increase his head count by two, and as a result, we cut back on the four for seasonal and dropped it to two. Is there any discussion at all? Recommend approval as presented. Thank you.
Second.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Lloyd?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Barr?
Yes.
Alderman Fowler?
Yes.
Carried, six zero.
Thank you. The next resolution, approving a contract with Crafton Toll and Associates, Inc., for final design, bidding, and construction administration of a northbound left-turn lane at the Mercy Way US seventy-one intersection and for other purposes. Chris, this is out of your shop. Any discussion at all? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Lloyd?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Barr?
Yes.
Alderman Fowler?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Carried, six zero.
Thank you. The next resolution, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Superior Auto Group of Salem Springs pursuant to a state procurement contract for the purchase of four twenty-seventeen Dodge Charger police vehicles in the total amount of ninety-three thousand dollars, sorry, ninety-three thousand thirty-two dollars for usage by the police department. Chief is here tonight if you have any questions about this purchase. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Alderman Barr?
Yes.
Alderman Lloyd?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Fowler?
Yes.
Carried, six zero.
Thank you. The next resolution, a resolution expressing the willingness of the city of Bella Vista to utilize federal aid funds for the Riordan Road Trailhead. Again, as discussed at the work session, we have an obligation to accept these funds formally, and it's part of the extension of the Razorback Greenway eventually, Chris?
Eventually, yes, sir.
Right. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Alderman Barr?
Yes.
Alderman Fowler?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Lloyd?
Yes.
Carried, six zero.
Thank you. The next resolution, approving Bella Vista Police Department policy regarding response outside jurisdiction. Chief is here to discuss that further. We do have agreements with cities that are contiguous or that abut our borders. However, the Police Chief Association is recommending that these agreements be expanded across the entire state. I think that's stating it correctly, Chief?
At least we plan to start with the county.
Okay. All right.
Mayor, I can clarify this a little bit. In the past, the sheriff's office had provide deputy sheriff commissions to certain number of local city police departments throughout the county in order to facilitate interchange of work and pursuits and things like that, and the sheriff's office is wanting to get out of doing that just for various reasons, liability reasons, and just whatever their policy is of our new sheriff on that issue. There is existing law that does give police the authority to take certain actions outside of jurisdiction, which covers basically the need, and then when you have multi, mutual, excuse me, when you have mutual aid agreements in place, the authorities are even increased, and so, they're wanting to go that route with the mutual aid and the existence of the state law rather than do the commissions. And so, we needed to change our policy to basically flow with that, so that's what we did.
Any questions? Comments? And entertain a motion to approve, please.
So moved. Second.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Fowler?
Yes.
Alderman Barr?
Yes.
Alderman Lloyd?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Carried, six zero.
Thank you. The next resolution, awarding bid and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a five-year contract with Custom Pavement Maintenance and Safety, a subsidiary of Time Striping, Inc., in variable amounts as provided in the bid for street striping and placement of pavement markings for the street department. If you remember, at the work session, Superintendent Button explained to us that it is normal to enter into a five-year contract, and our most recent has now expired. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Alderman Fowler?
Yes.
Alderman Barr?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes. Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Lloyd?
Yes.
Carried six zero.
Thank you. The next resolution, approving a combined four fifty-seven B slash four oh one A retirement program for city employees provided by Empower Retirement, Great West Life, and Annuity Insurance Company. Um, as Mrs. Cruz pointed out, at our, uh, work session, in your packet, there is this, it may not be in color, which shows how much our incumbent has been charging us for fees, and then we went out and we solicited quotes from four other companies, and you can see those quotes. Empowerment is the, um, least. They have a very, very strong base of municipal governments, and, um, it is Mrs. Cruz's and my recommendation that we move forward with Empower. Are there any comments at all? Sir?
Well, I just thought it was great the work she did, and it's, uh, substantial savings to the city for, uh, services as good or better, probably better.
It'll also help our employees as well with the, your friends.
Yeah, I was, I was floored, uh, when I saw the cost of administration of these funds, uh, in what, uh, took about one point four per seven, one point four seven percent out of that cost, from one point eight eight to point four seven percent. That's, that's huge over the lifetime of a city employee. And I, this is the second, just to me, huge thing that Melissa's been able to get done. The other was on the city healthcare plan, and she's really done, uh, really done right by the employees of the city of Bella Vista. She's done a tremendous job in that regard, so, Mike, you know.
I'll pass it along.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second. Alderman Lloyd?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Fowler?
Yes.
Alderman Barr?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Carried six zero.
Thank you. The next resolution, amending the twenty-seventeen city budget to appropriate an amount not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from undesignated reserves for payment of tax obligations related to the city's four fifty-seven retirement program. You may remember that Mr. Kelly waxed eloquent. I'm not sure if there's such a thing as Cliff Notes. Are there any, are there any questions for Mr. Kelly at all? 'Cause I certainly can't go through it all.
This, this relates to payroll tax obligations on employer and the city matching funds paid into the four fifty-seven, uh, that we need to, uh, pay in order to make our employees whole and to meet our obligation, uh, also facilitate us switching over into our new program.
Right. Comments? Any more information required? I'd entertain a motion to approve, please.
So moved. Second. Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Lloyd?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Barr?
Yes.
Alderman Fowler?
Yes.
Carried six zero.
Thank you. The final resolution of the evening, approving the nomination of Laura Claggett to the city of Bella Vista Public Library Advisory Board for an unexpired term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty. Um, Mrs. Adler has submitted her resignation. She and, and her husband are moving to Texas, and I would publicly like to thank Mrs. Adler for her many years of service on the, on the board. She's brought tremendous insight, and she will be missed. Um, Mrs. Claggett has extensive library experience, both in the public sector and in the private sector, and Mrs. Wright is, is looking forward to working with her, so I think she will be a great replacement. Are there, are there any questions or discussion at all? I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Lloyd?
Yes.
Alderman Barr?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Fowler?
Yes.
Carried six zero.
Meetings and announcements. The next city council work session will be March twentieth, twenty seventeen, at five-thirty in the evening at City Hall Conference Room. The next regular meeting of city council will be Monday, March twenty-seventh, at six-thirty, right here in Legion Hall. The Planning Commission Work Center, uh, session will be Thursday, March second, at four-thirty in the afternoon at City Hall Conference Room, and the Planning Commission regular meeting will be March thirteenth at six-thirty PM in the City Hall Conference Room. And with that, good evening, thank you, and we are adjourned.